Okay. It is. 6:08. I am going to officially call this meeting to session, to order. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment. To set yourself up for that, if it's easier, you can mute, turn off your video and mute your audio. But I did want to make sure we did the pledge. For this meeting as we always do, especially just because of the difficulty we're going through. So. If you are able, if you would like to turn off your video like I'm going to for standing up, please do. You can also mute your audio so we don't have a huge repeat, but it's not a big deal. And let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we think of those who have gone before us. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Okay, so I have designed a little bit of a slideshow to help guide us through this, and I, I think that a lot of you guys may see pictures on the right of your screen. So hopefully you can read this, but I'm going to go over everything. Just before we do roll call. Actually, Marie, why don't you do the roll call right now?
Okay. Roll call. Mayor Allen.
I am here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan. He's here. Trustees Lewis. Marpy. O'Malley. Trustee Patton.
I'm here.
Trustee Pine. And we have Attorney Gilchrist.
Hello there.
And we have.
Attorney Angle somewhere.
Yeah, Attorney Angle somewhere. Yep, there he is. Hi, Dave.
Old man with a beard.
Did we get Denise and Judy also on the line?
Denise. I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not seeing them.
All right, I'll just text her. And while we're doing this.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of things I want to go over as we get used to this new format of meeting. First off, the governor's executive orders have authorized us to hold our regular meetings over the internet. To facilitate that this runs smoothly and with as little technological hiccups as possible, we're asking for the following. This is also mainly. For non-trustees, but everyone else who's watching and following along. When not speaking, please mute your audio. This is the most important thing and it will prevent. A lot of sound feedback looping issues. If you're not sure how to do that, if you're on a phone or an iPad, typically you just tap the screen somewhere in the middle. And then the option for mute will come up. If you're on a laptop or a computer, there is a setting that you can find where you have yourself muted. And you can hit spacebar and that will unmute you for the time that you have your spacebar pushed down. If you want to look for that setting, you want to look for the three dots near your name or near the bottom of the screen. It says more. Go to your, I think, audio options and then that option will come up as well. That's very convenient. You're encouraged to use headphones, in particular headphones with a microphone, so that there's no feedback loop created. That can also be for future meetings. But these are very helpful because I hear everything and I have my microphone right here next to me. If two or more of you are watching from the same room, make sure that only one audio source is on and the other one's fully off. Otherwise, it will have. Constant loops of sound that build off each other and it will be amazing. In terms of our public meeting. We will be opening up the public meeting shortly to discuss the budget. If anyone wants to speak, the first time you speak that we ask that you state your full name and your street address. This is customary for public meetings. If you speak at other times in the meeting, just restate your name, please. The first people to be heard will be specific to the tentative budget, as that is the reason for the public hearing. We will later open up the floor multiple times during the meeting, including after the mayor updates, which is on the agenda. If you have something else to ask about, please wait until any of those opportunities. And remember, if you aren't speaking, please mute your audio. For trustees, if we're doing any votes. It would be helpful on the screen to do a thumbs up, thumbs down as well, as well as when you say aye or nay. Marie, if you decide that it'd be easier to do roll call votes, that's fine. And thank you guys for being flexible with this weird situation. All right. Few announcements, as I've discussed on the agenda. And through the governor's executive orders 202.4 and 202.13. The village election has been postponed until sometime after June 1st. They have not set that new date yet. But when that new date is set, we will publicize it. In the meantime, there's no change to the Board of Trustees' membership, so Ben Patton is coming out of retirement to stay on the board. Thank you, Ben Patton.
You're welcome.
Normally, the village board would hold their organizational meeting at this April meeting. But we are going to be, it's our intent, and it's a resolution later. To postpone the organizational meeting until after the June or the elections, which we think will be in June. And we will be continuing all policy staffing and appointments until that point. That's coming up later. Sorry, I missed a parentheses in the presentation. We also intended to do a public hearing on local law number one. Which is a local law adopting the 2020 New York State Uniform Fire Prevention. And Building Code and New York State Energy Conservation Construction Code. We're postponing that until we can meet in person. We'll renotice it when that time comes. Street sweeping is beginning on April 14th and it will last two weeks. In order, they're going to do the downtown area first. And the spots coming into and out of the village, and then in order, fourth ward, third ward, second ward, and first ward. During those times, our village DPW guys ask that you do not park. On the odd numbered side of the road on odd dates and don't park on the even side number of the road on even dates. Until your section of the village happens, has been taken care of. And by the way, our DPW guys and water guys are right now out on Church Street working on a water main issue that came up a few hours ago. Anything they say to get themselves out of a meeting. And finally, one thing I do want to show you. We will be talking about water bills and schedule shortly. But we have. Come up with a way to have you guys pay online. I'm going to go to the village website and over here on the right side of the page. Below the water and above the budget documents, there is a pay water bill online option. The link is coming soon. And basically in a couple of days, we have to move on a couple of things here tonight. An official business, but I do want to make sure that you know. That the option to pay online is going to be finally here in the water bills. I will also be including an insert that explains this and explains how to pay in our new current situation when the windows. Are not available. Let me get back to the presentation. In terms of mayor updates. We are very, very close to having the new phone systems and networks up. The hardware has all arrived on the phones and network side. We have a meeting tomorrow morning to test the network for. The phone side of the network. After that, we'll be choosing a date with Jackie and with Chief. To switch things over and at that point will be on the new phone system and the new network. So hopefully. In the next couple of weeks that will happen. It kind of depends at this point on our carrier. And how quickly we can get the carrier to switch it over to the new service. The second update. And in a moment, I'm going to pass it over to our environmental attorney, David Engel. Is that we have a signed consent order between the village and Honeywell with DEC in regards to the landfill. At this point, Dave, would you like to share?
Okay. As the mayor noted, there is a consent order that has been executed by DEC. With the village and with Honeywell. And pursuant to that consent order. A remedial investigation and a feasibility study will be conducted. At the landfill. Now, the remedial investigation. Will be undertaken to define the full scope of contamination at the landfill. And adjacent areas. It will be focused on the presence of PFOA and related substances. We have a side agreement. With Honeywell. And pursuant to that side agreement, Honeywell is bearing all of the costs. Upfront for the remedial investigation and the feasibility study. I expect to have within a matter of a day or two. A draft work plan for the remedial investigation from Honeywell. We will be meeting, obviously remotely with DEC later this week. To go over. Where everything is at. With respect to the preparation of the RI, the remedial investigation and the feasibility study. Honeywell has already prepared a draft community participation plan. Or citizen participation plan. However it's characterized. I've looked at that and commented on it and it's now in the process of being revised. This is going to be a long process to fully investigate the landfill. I expect that the remedial investigation will take. The better part of a year. And at some point. We're going to have to work out. Final issues with the company as to costs on the site, but at least upfront. The costs are being borne by Honeywell. The village's obligations, of course, are to provide. Reasonable cooperation with Honeywell through the process. And to take care of the normal operation and maintenance of the landfill, which has been closed. For approximately 25 years now. One of the issues that's out there that the village will have to address. Is the condition of the leachate collection system. Which requires some repair. But that is something that would exist as an obligation separate and apart. From the presence of PFOA at the facility. So that's where things are right now. The process of negotiating out the consent order and the side agreement with Honeywell, I thought went reasonably well. And we should have regular updates as the efforts proceed over the coming months. That's it.
All right, trustees, any questions? And if no trustees have any questions, does anyone else out there have any questions for our attorney about this? If you do, just remember to unmute yourself, introduce yourself, first name, last, first name and last name and address, and speak to us.
Hey, Rob, it's Lorraine.
Is that Lorraine Hackett?
Yes, it is. How are you?
I'm doing well, Lorraine. How are you?
I just, while you're on the PFOA issue, I didn't notice it on the. Agenda. Could you talk about the DOH site study and the Facebook pages they put up? Or get that listed somewhere?
I'm trying to remember what Facebook pages they have hooked up. Why don't you tell us?
I don't have Facebook up or my Zoom will crash.
Oh, I hear you. What's the name of the Facebook page? Do you know?
PFAS Study or something like that?
Oh, this is the PFAS Health Study, right?
Yeah.
Let me see if I can bring it up here. What I'll do is, because I don't, I can't find it right now. I will post a link to that on the village website. And I'll, I'll check in with DOH to see what we need to do to roll that out. Is that?
It's like the second or third post on my Facebook page if it's easier for you to find it that way.
Yep, give me one second. Any other questions for our attorney, even from Lorraine or anyone else? Okay, I'm still looking for that link. Lorraine. I will keep looking at it. If you can give me the date when you posted it, or, well, you can't because you'll lose Zoom. I'll try to get that out to the, to people via Facebook and via the website.
Down on my page because I don't post a whole lot.
I scrolled through and I did not see it.
Check under the kitty pic.
Hold on, I think I got it. PFAS Multi-Site Health Study.
That's it.
Okay. Is this, this is set up by New York State DOH?
Yes. Those were the links that Betsy gave us.
Okay, so for everyone who's looking on, I'll have some more information and I'll, I'll check in with DOH about really making a better rollout of this. Than right now, but what I will do is I will quickly. Share this screen, this Facebook page, so that you can see it. If you look under PFAS Multi-Site Health Study. This is the page that has been set up. There will be a very strong rollout on this so that we can encourage people to be involved. And maybe we'll have DOH and DEC when they're not completely swamped by the coronavirus response. Come and speak to us here like they have spoken to us at the other meetings. All right, seeing that there are no other questions for Dave Engel, I think we're all set, Dave. So thank you very much.
Okay, I can go back to. My regular life here.
I mean, you don't want to hang around for an hour? This is exciting stuff. Don't answer that. Don't answer that. Okay.
I'm going to make dinner for my wife who's engaged in stuff that's probably more important than I am today, so.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, good night.
Just so you guys know, Dave Engel's wife came out of retirement to help with, she's in the medical field, so she's doing. Some support for the medical field and I think in her specialty, so that's what he was referring to. Couple more updates. The new apple tree is planted in Wood Park. I am just so grateful for Chief Ash. Kevin. Father Tom. Who else was involved in that, Kevin?
Elhanan Nursery donated the tree.
Yes. It was.
Apple tree.
Okay, it was a great idea. It was a great story and I like what it symbolizes and in these times, I think there are just very important things to have, so. Thank you for all involved. I hope you checked that out. I think that's in a very similar location to a previous tree. Is that correct?
What was that?
Is it in a similar location to where we used to have a tree?
It's next to the park bench, right next to the Vietnam Memorial.
Awesome. Awesome, right near, right near the sidewalk, I think. All right, well, thank you guys. Thank you all who are involved in that. Just really, really great stuff. I wanted to pass on and make sure that people are aware that Rensselaer County has been absolutely on the ball. With getting information out. They're having Facebook. Conferences basically daily. They are updating people on Twitter on a couple of different accounts. They're updating them on Facebook. I just want to thank Rensselaer County, County Executive Steve McLaughlin. All of the people who I've been speaking to, who are involved, who are doing incredible job on monitoring what's going on, getting information out there. Whenever, and unfortunately for, for us in the village, we've only had two cases, but each time we've been called to be notified. I cannot even imagine what their workload is right now, so I just wanted to thank. Everyone there who is involved from the county. And if you want those updates, you should follow them on Twitter and you should also check them out on Facebook. They have pretty much daily updates going out there. I did want to offer a few thoughts. I know this is a particularly hard time. I know this is extremely hard on individuals and on families, on children, on businesses. On our local economy, on so many things that were progressing so well. I'm very happy to see. A lot of people are taking this seriously. I'm very glad to see people wearing masks. As we think about. The people on the front line of this in the healthcare industry. Who are willingly going in with a high likelihood of being infected. It's such a high risk. I just really can't say enough good things about them and I want people to be thinking. About those people and about some of the people who are most susceptible to having serious conditions. If they get this and I want to even see more people wearing more masks out there. If you are a parent, speak with your kids. Get them and their friends to be wearing masks. Every once in a while, I see some, some people congregating together still in small numbers, but it just worries me that people are going to be bringing it unknowingly to. Some of the people we're most concerned for, so keep those masks going, keep social distancing going. It's working. And we will weather this storm. At this point. I am done with my updates. I can take questions from the trustees. On anything.
Rob, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure thing, please, Marie.
We wanted to remind people that the road race on May 16th has definitely been canceled. And we're still waiting to hear back on the one on May 9th, but I would have to venture that that one is also going to be canceled, but we'll, we'll keep people apprised of that.
All right, thank you for doing that and thank you all, Craig, for bringing it up and making sure we got that covered. Judy, I see you on. On the bottom of the screen. I think we can hear you too.
I'm here.
Oh, yep, yep, you're there. So you can, somewhere on the bottom of the screen, I think you can click the mute or you can click the stop video and that will just stop showing the video. Glad we finally got you on, on those laptops.
Where's, where's the mute button?
Probably near the bottom. There should be a panel of things you can do, mute, stop video, a couple of other things. Are you on the laptop?
I am. And I have your, I have your order of the meeting that's up on my screen.
Okay, at the very top, is there a little dropdown by chance?
Nope, just says recording, nothing else, and the pictures.
If you maybe touch the middle of the screen, that will probably allow you to see the options. And if you can't find it, eh, just stay quiet and enjoy the ride, but speak up as you need to. Definitely. All right, thank you. I'd like to open up the people to be heard. Oh, you know, before we do this, we do need to actually have the motion to open the public hearing for the 2021 tentative budget. Is there a trustee who'd like to make that motion?
Motion.
Is that Ben?
Yeah, please. It was Ben.
And Bobby's second.
Thank you.
And for future, let's say our names as well when we say a motion or second, just to help Marie out.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, or any discussion on this? All in favor of opening the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries. We are now in the public hearing. At this point, if anyone would like to ask questions or speak regarding the. Budget, now is the time. Just remember to say your name, unmute yourself and say your name, address, and then fire away with any questions. I guess we don't have any, so that's fine. I will open it up again later to do that. And we do have all the documents on the village website right here. One more shot to see if anybody has anything to say about the, or ask about the budget. Hearing none, I will offer a chance to speak again later. We'll keep the public hearing going and move on to our reports. Trustees, I did email out to you the. Reports. We'll go through the treasure report. Is there anything, Ben, that you want to highlight in your semi-retired state?
That, just that Denise got her new computer. She says it's working well and she can work from home if she needs to. She was able to use a new software for the water bills and that worked really well as. As she pointed out in her report, paid the bills for the month. And. Of course, had a big hand in helping with the budget as well. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the treasure reports?
Motion by Bobby.
Second, Emily.
All in favor? All right, motion carries on to the next report. Police Department. Chief Ash, are you on still? Chief, if you are, tap the screen, hit unmute and you should be live to go. Yeah, you are.
Are you there? Okay, good. Hi, everybody. I hope we all don't get used to this and wanting to be doing these all the time. This is pretty great, though. Okay, per total calls from March were 119. Total calls from February were 146, which brings us to a total calls this year of 381. Total arrests from March were eight with a total arrest from February 14th. The total arrests for the year, 35. I'm not going to go through all the service calls, but I will highlight the EMS calls, which are a total of 28, which were an increase. All officers are responding to all EMS calls. Depending on the situation, they're using their judgment. They're all equipped with the proper gear to go into any call. Gloves, masks. We also have some gowns here for the officers. But we communicate with the EMS personnel inside at all times. So there's been a little bit of an increase there. Also, calls outside the village, there was a bump up on that with six. We've have worked with the sheriffs and the state police and to try to get a unit out there as quick as possible if those guys are tied up. Which they seem to be getting tied up quite a bit lately. Our arrests for the month were for driveway intoxicated, arson, conspiracy, harassment, and assault and burglary. I just want to state that on March 14th, officers investigated the structure fire in Main Ave. The investigation led to the arrest of two individuals for arson and burglary. The investigation also tied the subjects into another structure fire that occurred in North Huesick last year. Officers were able to turn over key evidence to the New York State Police, who were able to make an arrest in that case as well. We also assisted with the Bennington Police Department in apprehending the subject that was wanted for assault and then later charged for attempted murder. During the investigation, key information was developed and turned over to Bennington, which helped result in the subject's arrest. Short of the other than that, we're staying, trying to keep everybody updated as possible on our Facebook on the COVID-19. We've been, I had conversation with the county from Steve McLaughlin's office that wanted to point out that. They were up in the village at one point and they thought that. The village was doing a great job on social distancing and they felt that it was important. They bring that to our attention. We've had. I think maybe one complaint of a place where some people they thought were gathering, they weren't gathering. We went in and checked on it. They weren't gathering. So we are entertaining any of those complaints that come in and we are investigating them. And we are following up on them, but at this point, everybody in the village has been doing really great. And everything has been safe and I want to thank Kevin's involvement in, in our tree planting. And also the. Oh my God, the company came in here and cleaned up, sanitized all the offices, the police department. We organized all the fire departments in the town to be done. And. Quick response. How I could forget, I'm sorry. Quick response and, and they did that with no charge. When they contacted us about doing it, we felt it was important that we communicate with all the other organizations, fire departments, EMS in the county or in the town. And we were able to organize all the fire departments to get done as well, so. That should be it unless anyone has any questions for me.
Bob, do you know the number of people that are taking advantage of the food delivery through the police department and who's the helpers?
Yes, I apologize. Forgot. I got that written down here. We're up to about 10 people right now that I think have used that service since, but it seems to be growing. Mondays and Fridays are our days. And I know Marie and Kevin have been great with their, with their list. Of me reaching out to them when we have somebody or the people reaching out to them. But the town has been partaking in that as well and we've been able to reach out to people in the town. So it's been, it's a good service and we'll continue with that. Until this is over with. Also, just to highlight again, I do have updated masks and cleaning supplies. For, I keep the town supplied, their offices and our offices, so if there's any other organization that you think we might be able to assist. Or need to assist, reach out to me and I'll make sure that I try to get enough material for them as well.
Bob, I know some of the local restaurants were having trouble getting hand sanitizer. Is that something you can get as well for them?
I think that I might be able to assist them. If you want to point them over to me and I'll see what I can do to. Make some, I'm looking as I'm, I'm talking. I'm kind of low on a sanitizer right now. But I got enough for, for the village and the town's offices and our office. But I'll be reaching out to the county to, to see maybe I can get some more.
Yeah, I know the health department's mandating that they have it, but there, a lot of them are struggling to find it.
If you can, we don't have to do it right now, but if you want to reach out to me later on, Kev. With the list of them and, and I will reach out to them and make arrangements to get to them what they need.
Okay, great.
Assist them as much as I can. And with the permission of the village to board. If that's outside the village, any of those restaurants as well. With, with your permission, then I can get it out to them as well.
Yeah, I think that's a, a no-brainer. Yeah, I think that's fine. Yeah, I think that's fine, as far as I'm concerned. Does anybody have any argument with that?
Nope.
Bob, and just one question on the Who's a Kelpers, or is it still just the, the police department making the deliveries? Or is our individuals making deliveries as well?
It's the majority of the Who's a Kelpers, the Who's a Kelpers are really stepped up to the plate here. They have been able to, um, distribute to that, um, the product or the groceries. Um, I think we've only done one. Um, the police himself physically. Other than that, the Who's a Kelpers have been, uh, if, if you're in on, on our conversations on Fridays and Mondays, I know last Friday, Kevin and Marie and, uh, my phone didn't stop beeping with people, you know, texting and saying they're available for, uh, delivery if, if need be. So it's been working really well. Everybody's been pulling together. It's, it's fantastic the way they did it.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, because I had a couple people who were interested in helping. That's what I was asking.
Yep, they can get, at their best to, to get those names over to Kevin.
Okay, I gave him Kevin, okay.
And then one other thing, Kev, maybe we might want to even, and I, I hate to say this, but I think it's important for the elderly someone. I, I hate to see them, uh, going without a meal. So if there's someone that's struggling that we know of as well, um, I know of a couple restaurants that would be more than happy to step up and help us, uh, to provide a meal for them if need be.
We also reached out to the, um, local pharmacies and, uh, had been in touch with Haka about helping them deliver some, uh, food from them. But so far, uh, we haven't gotten anything from them.
Yeah, the county's, um, Meals on Wheels have reached out to me as well, told me to, to keep them in, in the, the loop if there's anything that they can assist with. So other than that, short of Marie and Kevin and I talking about a massive parade and party later on in, in the year.
We're in good shape.
Hey Bob, Andy Gilchrist here.
Hi, Andy.
Hi, uh, one other question. You said you had masks. Do you have a, uh, inventory of masks?
Yes.
And the reason for that is the governor, um, issued an additional executive order that requires employers and also municipalities to supply masks to their essential workers that come into contact with the public. So we just want to make sure we're, we're on top of that.
Yeah, um, I, I've been getting the, um, the executive orders from you and then the county keeps me updated on it. That was one of the most recent ones, I think, that they forwarded to me.
That's correct, just within the last few days.
And I, I checked, um, I, Marie, I think you have to just correct me if I'm wrong. I think you guys got enough of them over there right now?
Everybody has one, so we should all be outside right now.
Well, I'll get you more. If you have one, it's best probably to give you a couple extra ones. And if you could check tomorrow, or I'll get ahold of, um, Mark, unless Mark's in on the meeting right now. And if he needs any additional over there, I can get him over there to him.
There's a few on the file cabinet there, Bob, in my office.
Did you, and you're taking care of the highway department too, Craig, the town highway?
Yeah, I've been taking, uh, the, the supplies that you've been bringing. I, I have been helping myself too, so thank you very much for that.
Okay, well, just keep me updated if you need more and I'll get them over to you. But I think we've filled our obligations, Andy, if, uh, so far at this point.
Very good, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chief? In that case, I'm looking for a motion to approve the chief's, uh, the police report.
Motion.
Thank you, Vanessa, second.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Vanessa and Emily.
Got it.
All, all in favor?
Hi, thank you.
Aye?
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief, very much.
All right, take care, thank you very much. I'm still here in the office. If you need something, call me in, I'm going to be doing an interview in about fifteen minutes.
Hey, can you get my Facebook livestream to work? I need that to happen.
I told you it was going to be a struggle for me on this technology, so I can't help you on that.
You nailed it. You nailed it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, alright.
Good first pitch.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, oh, I think I may have figured out the livestream, albeit late. Um, in the meantime, uh, Mark, code enforcement.
Everybody, uh, not too much has been going on. I have been, uh, responding to complaints, but, uh, the inspections pretty much have come to a halt, except for, uh, as described, uh, the mayor's orders early on. I've just been doing pre-tenant inspections where there, nobody has been living in the apartment. I've had a couple of situations where people have moved people into the apartment, uh, trying, trying to do a simultaneous thing, but, uh, you know, with having me do an inspection, but I, I would not do that. So we're just, uh, I put them on a list and we'll follow up with them when we get the all clear. Um, so, but other complaints I have responded to and I'm dealing with them as I can. Uh, and just so you're aware, I think I did give out some bogus information yesterday responding to a complaint on a rooster. Um, because, so I, I invited, uh, somebody to this meeting, uh, thinking that we were talking about chickens tonight. Uh, I didn't see, I don't see it on the, the agenda, so I don't know if that's actually happening or not. But I know there's at least one person that's tuned in with, uh, with a special interest on the chicken issue.
Uh, we do not have anything on the agenda for the chicken issue yet. Um, that's something I am, um, actually a little bit frustrated that I haven't gotten to you, but there's been so much, uh, else going on. Um, I still want to get us together and now that we've been through Zoom and we got it working this week, uh, we can set up a Zoom meeting for all those participants and like we had planned previously, uh, start to work our way through, um, creating some recommendations. So if you're on for the chicken-
Facebook feed yesterday and, uh, people were talking about it, why there hasn't been any action or, uh, any movement on our local law, any discussion, or why we haven't brought it up to the board yet.
Uh, that is because I have not had a free moment to get everyone to meet yet. Once, uh, this meeting is done and once the network, phone, phone network stuff is set up, um, that clears things out of the way for me to go all in on that.
Uh, I don't think that I have anything else unless anybody had any questions on my report.
Mark, it's Kevin. Uh, we received the minutes from the zoning board and planning board from, uh, last August and September. And I know there was some movement at the, it's a spiritual center, I think it's called, on Main Street. And I noticed some people moving in there. Do they have to have a CEO every time somebody moves into one of their rooms?
And what's going on there, Kevin, is, uh, it's actually been rented as a one-family, which is how that property is actually classified. So that will stay as a one-family, in my opinion now. I mean, she wanted to-
So the planning board never acted on her request for a, uh, spiritual center? Is that what happened?
Uh, they, they did act on it and I think they were gonna, they were gonna allow it to happen. Um, but she never followed through. I think, uh, there, there was, there was some criteria that they were requesting from her. And rather than follow through on those things, uh, she took the path of least resistance and did nothing. And then she had an opportunity to rent it out recently, uh, to a family. And so that's, that's the activity that you've seen there. It's a family moving in there. That's one of the ones where they were moving in simultaneously as she's requesting an inspection and I would not do the inspection.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I do know, though, that, that, I mean, the building itself was in pretty good shape and nobody had been in there. So I, I was fairly comfortable doing that.
Yeah, I know she's, she's been working on the building, or had somebody working on the building, but, uh, I was just curious, especially after getting the planning and zoning minutes just this week.
Is, is that, is it okay to say, is it Janet? Is that the individual whose house it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mark? Uh, okay, hearing none. Um, without, I'd like to, uh, look for a motion to approve the code enforcement report.
Motion from Bobby.
Second by Ben.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries, thank you. And we did finally get our Facebook livestream, uh, up and running. I had to clean my browser cache to make it work, but a little bit of troubleshooting and we're on. So if you are on, thank you guys for joining and sorry about the, uh, late start time. Alright, moving on, uh, in our reports to the community service report. Would you not have a report from Jerry? So we'll get two reports next month. Um, clerk, deputy clerk report. Marie, anything you want to point out?
Um, no, basically, I mean, we've been trying to, you know, work, uh, around the virus, uh, in and out of the office. Um, everybody's been working really hard preparing the bills, getting them ready to go out, taking care of the daily, uh, mails, emails, somewhat from home. We did get the laptops this week, which is going to help out. And, um, you know, answering phone calls and fielding emails, our, our usual stuff, the death certificate, it's, uh, birth records. All of that is still happening behind the scenes. So, uh, we're in and out of there working, um, even though our windows are closed.
Alright, great. And you guys are checking the Dropbox in the main lobby every day, correct?
That's checked every day, so if anybody needs to leave anything, they can do so.
As are phones, um, as well. And now that we have all the laptops, uh, working from home and everyone has their internet working from home, uh, we're set technologically that way. So thank you, guys. Any questions, uh, for them? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the clerk deputy clerk report.
I just have one question about when are the water bills going out? Is that on Friday the seventeenth, is that correct?
We have to, uh, oh, I'm sorry, we, we have to move on, on that. So we're, they're kind of waiting for us to make our decision on the schedule. But Marie, what is the intention on those?
Um, we're waiting for the movements. We're ready to start processing them, um, printing the bills and then we'll, we'll need the additions to put in them and get them out. So it'll be Friday, Monday, probably at the latest.
Okay, thank you.
Assuming we move on everything tonight, um, I'm going to get the letter, um, that we're going to include in it that, uh, that explains the changes in our schedule and explains the ability to pay online. That will be completed likely tomorrow. And Andy, I'm going to be sending that to you for review. We'll add that into the water mailing, so Friday or Monday, that will be going out.
Thanks.
Looking from, unless there's another question, looking for a motion? To approve the clerk deputy clerk report.
Second, Bobby.
Oh, we need a motion first.
I got Vanessa.
Somebody, somebody made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, Vanessa, and Bobby's second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Carries? Thank you. Highway department report. I know Neil is not on right now, which I'm sure is breaking his absolute heart. Um, but he is, uh, working on a, a water line. Uh, so is there anything, um, Bobby, you want to highlight in here?
No, just the fact that, that the, uh, street sweeping started today, starting with fourth ward, going through first ward, and they'll go back around again if they can. Neil said he hopes to have a couple passes through the entire village by the time he's done.
Bobby, I know we have the, uh, odd even parking. Uh, is that started yet? Uh, because I know they were doing Main Street and it looked like they were going around cars up and down the street.
I, I asked Neil about that, um, yesterday, actually. Uh, I, he said they were just concentrating on downtown first, as far as Main Street and Church Street. And then when they go to the wards, they're going to, he said that, uh, he was going to get cooperation with the police department, ask people to move their vehicles. But yes, starting in, starting tomorrow, if, when they're done with downtown, it should be going odd even based on the day.
They may have gotten, uh, through some of downtown today because I know they were up in the fourth ward, uh, later in the afternoon today.
We have that posted on Facebook, the newspapers, and, uh, anyplace else we can, we can put that?
Um, I don't know if it's on Facebook, it's in the agenda, but that's not really going to be a thing, so I'll put that on Facebook tonight.
Thank you.
Is anyone from the papers, uh, on tonight, or no?
I was wondering, I thought I had heard, what's that?
I was just wondering if anybody from the papers was on, so we could make sure they got out in the eastern press this week, anyway.
I was hoping I had heard someone earlier, but I don't think-
It doesn't look like it, according to the list.
Yeah.
Didn't see him on, I didn't see him either.
Alright. Marie, maybe we send those out, um, pull them right off the agenda, send them out first thing in the morning tomorrow, or call them and see if they can get them in?
Uh, yeah, we probably missed it for this week, but I can, I'll give them a shout.
Alright. Uh, in that case, um, with, unless there's any more questions for Bobby about the report, looking for a motion to approve the highway department report?
I'll make that motion, Bobby.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby and Vanessa, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fair Island.
Yes?
Hi, it's, uh, Adam. I live in the village, so I'm doing, this is a, I'm a member of, of, who lives in Huzick Falls, but I work for the banner as well. Email it, uh, to Mark Rondo, he's our, uh, editor on. He can get the stuff in for the sweet sweeping in our, uh, calendar section.
Wow, that's great, Adam. And Marie, did you get that address, you need to go email that to?
Uh, what was that, Mark? What was it, Mark Rondo?
Yeah, M, it's M. Rondo, R-O-N-D-E-A-U at BenningtonBanner.com.
Okay, got it.
Thank you very much, sir.
No problem.
Alright, um, sewer department report. Uh, anything anyone wants to highlight? I talked to the county today and, um, the numbers were, uh, were up this March as opposed to last March because the weather was nicer this March as opposed to last March. So we're already approaching, um, our summer numbers. Um, unless, well, anyone has, uh, any other questions, looking for a motion to approve the sewer department report?
Motion, Ben.
Second, Kevin.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, Kevin. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries? Great, thank you. Uh, and the water department, uh, reports. Don't think there's anything out of the norm to highlight. Sure they'll have some information about this break tonight, uh, next week's, or next month's meeting. Uh, unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion to approve the water report. Thank you, Vanessa.
Second, Bobby.
Thank you, Bobby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, great. Before I move on to minutes, I do want to open it up again to people to be heard. If anyone would like to, uh, speak up, um, in regards to the, um, budget or have any questions about that or anything, uh, now is the time to do it. Just introduce yourself with your name and address. And I don't seem to hear any.
Hey.
Hey.
Can you hear me?
Yes, who is this?
This is Matthew Whiteakis. I live at two thirty-one Church Street.
Hi, Matt.
In the village?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I came out tonight because I heard there was going to be stuff on, uh, backyard chickens.
Uh, no, there's unfortunately nothing on backyard chickens. I talked about this-
I know, I know, but-
Sorry about that.
Anybody can be heard, so.
No, that's fine.
Just want to say that, uh, you know, uh, they're allowed in every borough in New York City. And if you go anywhere out of Huzick Falls, the village, we're all farming town. It's farms everywhere you go. So the, the issue to even talk about it just, just doesn't seem right to me. So I, I, I would like to, I would like to see it gone through that, you know, chickens are okay.
Alright, that's, that's great, Matt. And I'm, um, it's funny because when I started here, I knew that, uh, I had been told that, uh, beware of chicken, uh, and chicken laws because it's such a big, uh, hot issue. Um, but most, if not all, the people who I spoke into are in favor of adding, um, some chicken laws and that's sort of what our group is intending to do. Our attorney has, um, gotten us, uh, some, uh, area, uh, areas within our region, some of their laws, so we can go through and bring some recommendations to the board. So we are very much, um, um, in support of moving on that. My apologies for not working enough to get that going. I'm hoping to get that going later this week or early next week.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Would anyone else like to speak on anything? Budget related or not, it's fine? Give a couple more seconds in case anyone's trying to unmute themselves.
Well, maybe one more thing from me.
Sure.
Um, the water bill.
Yes.
There's a lot of people that are struggling right now that aren't working. Um, maybe drop the, um, the fee, late fees for the water bill. There's a lot of people that work in restaurants in our areas that don't have the extra money right now.
So, Matt, we have, uh, thought about the same thing and we are going to be voting on two resolutions later. One that would delay the, uh, late fee for an additional about, I think it's a month to a month and a half. About July first, I think, is when it would start to give people some time to get back into the swing of things. And we've also looked ahead at the tax bill that will be coming out and we plan on, um, moving that forward as well, uh, to a later time before the late fee starts. And that is coming up later in the agenda. But we hear your concern and we share your concern. There's a lot of people struggling right now, uh, with what's going on. A lot of people are unemployed and waiting on unemployment. Uh, this is a tough time and we, we hear you. This is a tough time and we, we hear you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Would anyone else like to share? Okay, I will open it up at another point later in the meeting, but for right now, we will go on with business. Trustees, you've received the March 10th regular minutes for review. Craig, if I recall correctly, you had, I think you had submitted one change.
It was just a little typo.
Yep. Anything else need to be changed in anyone's view? If not, looking for a motion to approve the March 10th meeting with the one change that Craig, one typo correction that Craig had put forward.
There were actually two typos, just so you know. I corrected both of them.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Marie. So I'm sorry, Ben, was that a motion from you?
Yes, it was.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, everybody, but we'll give it to Vanessa. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? All right, carries. Thank you. Trustee and committee reports. Let me just go sort of in order on our letter here. Bobby, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Vanessa? Emily?
I had my first meeting with Urschwama. Hope I said that right. It went well.
Great.
I took over Ben's spot for signatures and hope to meet them someday.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Kevin?
Still looking at the parking issues in our parking lots. We're still having some problems. People not conforming to our parking spot locations, especially by the tri-state federal credit union. And I went back and re-canvassed all the parking lots and hopefully as soon as we can, sometime this spring, we can work on some new regulations for the parking lots. The other thing is some downtown merchants talked about the lack of trash receptacles downtown. I looked into a couple of companies that do sell those and we would have to buy heavy duty garbage receptacles. There's a company in Brattleboro, Vermont that sells them and I got a quote for 10 for $3,000. So it's something we can also look at in the future.
Okay. Why don't you check in with Neil and maybe come up with some locations where these would go? If that's something we want to do, I think that would help us make a decision on this.
Yeah, because currently the ones we do have are being used, but they're, they're filling up within a couple of days and the trash is falling all over the street. So merchants had requested that, so I think that's something we should look into soon.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Kev?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Formerly retired Ben?
I'd like to thank everybody for the automobile. You got me in my retirement. Thank you very much. I have spoken to, this is more for Emily, spoken with Penny Pleasant, who she will be signing, Emily will be signing checks with. I'm gonna put them to, the two of them together tomorrow. I've also asked Penny if, before Emily gets her signatures done, if Matt needs signatures that I can do that until Emily gets up and running. So other than that, so glad I'm here at another meeting. Thank you, Mayor, for canceling the election.
Hey, it was, you know, I just made a phone call, made it happen. You know me. Artist formerly known as trustee Ben. All right, Craig Pine?
I have nothing.
Okay, in that case, let's go on to old business. We had two items that I'm, well, I have, I have an update on one, but we'll, we'll start with the discussion regarding price changes for household garbage and adding costs for recycling. We haven't had a second to talk this through. And I will tell you that Saturday, it was very, very busy down at the transfer station. Today, not so much, but I've just been kind of checking in and bringing my own brush down. I have been glad that Chuck has been wearing a mask, a cloth one. But I did tell him today that we will have a more full one by Saturday for his next day there. And I'm gonna touch base with Neil and with Chief about that, just to make sure we have enough for our employees. But otherwise, I'm looking for us to table this and maybe sometime in the next month, we can start thinking about how we want next year to roll for the transfer station because obviously this year is very much in full swing.
I make a motion that we table it. Bobby?
Second, Ben.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you. Discuss the disbursement of funds between HAC3 and youth center. This comes about to the fact that we have $3,000 budgeted for this current fiscal year that we typically have divided in the past. We gave 1,500 to the youth center. We have, I think we've requested information on what things are going on for the Armory. I did receive a letter from the Housick Armory Board that I'm going to share on the screen in a moment, if I can do this. Do you guys see the letter? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Dear Village Housick Falls Board, the Housick Armory Board would like to request funding of $3,000 from the Village of Housick Falls. We've come a long way since last December. Despite our grant funding end, we have accomplished quite a bit in the last year. The Armory currently has no employees and all of the work being done there is a product of a working board of directors. That's impressive. The board has opened the building up for public use as its community center. The first function at the Armory last March was the St. Patrick's Day celebration following the parade. Pickleball was soon to follow with over 100 members in the Housick Falls Pickleball Club, who has court timed five days a week, sometimes twice a day. The very successful rifle team from high school, as well as the Chilean squad has practiced there. The Housick Armory is home to the hometown, Housick Town Offices, as well as a recording studio, the Living Resource Center, Housick Falls Cub Scouts Troop, Housick Rising and Town Court. Many village and town activities are held at the Armory with minimal charges or free of any fees. Important town and village events, such as Sean Casey's funeral and the medal pitting for a veteran took place at the Armory. We feel a central part of the Housick and Housick Falls community and respectfully ask for funds to help us continue our essential role. Thank you, Housick Armory Board. Is anyone on right now from the Housick Armory Board who wants to speak or add anything to this? It's pretty clear and a lot of good information there.
This is Mary Ann Wickelbauer.
Hi, Mary Ann.
Hi. I am on the Housick Armory Board currently. And this is, I, I wrote this up and, and sent it over today just in case this audio didn't work for me. So yes, we, we do need funding. We, we do more and more and have had, I mean, the, the letter could have really been endless because we are asked on a weekly basis to step up and house a function. Or we do a lot with the, the museum. And right now, the school has their lunches there in the afternoons after they deliver them so that people can come pick them up if they weren't home to receive them. So we are constantly being asked to support the community and be there for the community. And we are really happy that the building is being used to that effect. But we do need some funding help.
Trustees, any questions?
No question. Just the only question I have, Rob, is Bobby, is do we have money in, in the budget? Is that correct? That we could?
Are you talking about this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
I'm talking for the, putting in for the 2021 budget.
What we had in the budget were our standard of $3,000 to be split between what we called HAC3 and the youth center.
Right.
Which would now be revised to be the Armory and the youth center. So we still have the $3,000 budgeted for this coming fiscal year, the one starting in June. Marie and/or Denise, correct me if I'm wrong. We did send the 1,500 that we had budgeted for this current fiscal year over to the youth center and we were waiting to see what to do with the other 1,500. Is that correct?
I'm looking right now, Rob.
I know we already approved the money for the youth center.
The 1,500, right?
Right.
And I think they already sent that check over as well. I think you're right. I'm just wondering if we've done, I think we were still waiting on the other 1,500 to see what we could find out.
Actually, I have not written either check to either place. There's still 3,000 in there.
Oh.
That was as of the budget that I'm looking at right now. I can't figure out how to get to my QuickBooks while I'm on here. But I thought that we were still waiting for the allocation to be determined.
Okay, well, you can definitely send the 1,500 to the youth center. I know we had moved on that in previous meetings.
Okay. So that would leave the 1,500.
Andy, do you see any legal issues if the board decides now to send the current 1,500 that was budgeted for this fiscal year to the Armory, if that's what the board wants to do?
In your budget for 1920, did you specifically identify HAC3?
In the budget item, it's just youth contractual. That's the way it's always been stated, the 7310.4.
Right.
And then the board allocates as they see fit.
So, Rob, I don't see any legal issue. Just make it clear that you're gonna allocate that remaining 1,500 to the Armory. We'll just make it clear on the record.
Okay, so I guess the first step on this trustees is do you want to make the decision right now to allocate the $1,500 from this current fiscal year to the Housick Armory?
I, yes, I'm definitely in favor of that, Rob. If we need a motion, I'd be glad to make it. This is Bobby.
Go for, so you want to make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I need a second?
Second, Kevin.
All right, a bunchy. We'll give it to Kevin. Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
I can get both checks out tomorrow, Rob.
Brilliant, thank you. Hearing no other discussion, let's move to vote. All in favor? I?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Great, okay. Carries unanimously. So that handles this current fiscal year's $1,500. Now, we have in the budget, and we can come back to budget talks or discuss it right now if you want. We have the $3,000 for the youth contractual, 1,500 to the youth center, and 1,500 again to the Armory for next fiscal year. I know I had brought up over an email conversation the possibilities of switching a couple funds around because we had, I think, a little bit too much money in the park allotment in the general fund. And I'll bring that up shortly. Are you guys content with in the next fiscal budget, continuing the 1,500 to the youth center and 1,500 to the Armory?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, then I don't think we'll need to change that, except maybe we'll just make sure Denise that the, no, we already said it's youth contractual, shall we now? Andy, do you have any issue? Should we change the line where it comes out of? Because if it's youth contractual, the Armory is not specifically a youth place, although youth use it. How do you want us to handle that in the budget for this coming fiscal year?
Is Denise, is there any other specific line item that you think a payment to the Armory would be better fit than youth contractual?
We have an economic opportunity and development contractual, the 6989.4.
Yeah, one option, Rob, would just be to amend the tentative budget to reduce the youth contractual by 15 and add it to the other line item.
Okay, so that would be reduce the 7310.4 by 1,500 and move it to the, what is that, 6989.4?
Right.
Line for the Housick Armory. Okay, I have that one jotted down. Since we're talking budget right now and we've kind of ended our old business because we made the decision on the dispersments. Let me open it, let me get from the trustees what, an opportunity to speak on anything related to the budget. If you want me to bring up any item in the budget, I have it here on the screen, I think, as you can see. One of the concerns I had brought up was the parks. I don't know if we can see it. I don't know if you can see the right side of the screen. It's blocked on my side, which does not really help the idea here. Let me see if I can zoom out. Sorry to make that smaller, but now I can see the numbers. There was 5,000 here that we had put in parks personnel services. I spoke with Neil and that's really not necessary. When our guys are doing work on our parks, it's just through our normal personnel line. So in my mind, we have 3,000 if we want to put it down to 2,000 or more that we can move from there and put elsewhere. I know in the email I had suggested putting a little bit more money into the police line just because it was a little bit lower. What were your guys' thoughts on that?
I know that we offered help out the, the community ban and fix the gazebo. Was that money coming out of parks or was that coming from somewhere else?
Yes, this fiscal year, we have money set aside for that in this $5,000 to go 50/50 with the community ban to purchase the supplies to fix the floor. I think they were going to do the work, but I have to double check with them. Obviously, with COVID-19, everything kind of got shifted around. But we had intended to have money in there for that and we also need to make some fixes on the Kelly Street Park, which we're going to be doing. So the $5,000 of which we've only spent, it looks like 458 at this point, that's gonna go to the floors at the gazebo in the park and Kelly Street repair. And then we have another 5,000 for next year. So even if we take this personnel services number of 5,000 down, it's not an issue because the 5,000 here is where we would put in for things like replacing parts and things like that. Anyone else have any comments on the budget or things they want to propose changing? Do you guys like the idea of moving 3,000 or 4,000 out of the parks personnel services line and putting it into the police line? We don't have to if you don't want to. I just know we talked about it when we were having our discussions and it came up.
Can it be transferred to later date if needed?
I think so. Andy, Denise?
Yes, you can do it by motion to amend the budget, budget modification.
Yep, that's correct, Denise.
So it sounds like you guys are content to leave it as it is.
As long as we can transfer to a later date if we have to, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
Yep. All right, trustees, any other things you want to bring up about the budget? This is the, what's, I'm sorry?
I said, no, this is Bobby.
Okay, this will be the last chance then for anyone who's connected to this to bring up anything about the budget. If, I'll give you a few seconds to unmute yourself and speak. Otherwise, if not, I will be looking for a motion to close the public hearing. So if anyone wants to speak, now's the time.
Yes, can you hear me? This is Rocky Odell, 40 Lyman Street.
Yes, hi Rocky. How are you?
Very good. These questions pertain to the street work being done down here to sewer.
Okay.
Hasn't been real good communication on the timeline of when things are gonna be done. So I have a question of all of the manholes are all dug up all around them? Do you know how long they're going to lead those all dug up?
You guys are in Lyman Street, right, you said?
Yes, and it would be all of it. It's Superior, Lyman, Water Street.
Yes.
All the holes are dug.
We, we heard from our contractors who are handling that, Louie's Brothers. They are intending on coming back the week of May 4th to May 8th to do all of the paving. Neil would have been on to mention that. I think, I'm gonna double check his report, but I'm pretty sure that is the intention for them to come back and do the paving for all of that work, which will be repaving those roads, which will also fix the manholes.
So the holes all around them are gonna, gonna be left until May 14th.
What holes are you talking about? Has it worn out and there's just a?
There is a, probably 18 inches deep and about a foot all the way around the manhole cover hole.
I will bring that up to Neil shortly after we get off this meeting because that's, that's not all right. Even if we need to do some simple patch for now, it does not sound like that is anything that should wait for another few weeks. Uh, it does not sound like that is anything that should wait for another few weeks.
I know when the player truck went up Water Street, it had a very hard time making it up it. And the buses have a very hard time when they're dropping the food off, trying to make it around the sandbar because of their it's not a straight line, so you have to kind of dodge back and forth on the sandbar part, which would be superior.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. I was not aware of that. We will definitely um, be looking at that this week and seeing if we can make some quick patches right now. Um, in the, otherwise, starting around May fourth and once we are closer and have confirmation, we'll definitely be getting in contact with residents down there. And I think the contractors uh, will be putting up letters and that's part of their requirements anyway. Um, just so people know that's coming.
Please don't leave it up to them.
What's that?
Please don't leave it up to them because they have not let me know or any of us know once so far. I mean, I got all my Halloween decorations out and two days later I had to pick them all up because they were ripped in the street up, so.
I'm sorry about that. Uh, what's your address again?
Mine is forty Lyman Street.
All right, yeah, I'll make sure we get some information out about that. Um, when we are confident, we'll also put it up on Facebook. I know not everybody uh, gets that, but we can at least send our guys around to put some notices indoors that that's coming.
And if anybody down here is not happy with the work they've done on our yard, how would we go about um, addressing that?
That's also part of what they're coming back to do. Um, I know there is um, a couple people and I know, actually somebody else in that area reached out to me um, a couple days ago over email um, and sent some, some information to, oh, was that you?
No, it was a friend of mine next door. He had asked me for your um, email.
Yep, and Neil uh, has said he'd be down. I don't know if he's been down yet, but I know he'd said he'd be down to check that out. Um, yeah, we're hoping uh, that once we get into this early May and they're back, we can get all these problems rectified. And that's going to be the time that if uh, we're not, you're not satisfied with things, bring it up to us, call the office directly and we'll, we'll get on it.
Rob, I will follow up with Neil tomorrow on that to make sure that he's stopped down.
Great, great, thank you.
I also referred somebody to Neil last week who was.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Anything else, Rocky?
Very much, no.
Okay.
I'm rocking.
With the, also with the contractors, Rob, uh, the Greenway uh, still isn't back to where it was back before they started the work and uh, will they be back to finish that and make it, they said they will make it uh, better or as good as it was. And at this point, it certainly isn't as good as it was.
Yes, I recall the as good or better email as well. Um, Bobby, can you bring that up to Neil as well?
Yes, I will.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Uh, anyone else out there would like to speak or share anything? Or ask questions about the budget or anything else? Okay, if you're struggling to get your mute and you figured out later to speak up. Uh, otherwise, hearing none, I am looking for a motion to close the public hearing related to the twenty twenty twenty-one tentative budget.
Motion to close by Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Second it, Bobby.
Thank you, Bobby. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie's, public hearing is now closed. Uh, Andy, uh, the one thing that we've discussed about changing to the budget was the reduction that you suggested of the seventy three ten point four line. Um, moving out of youth into the sixty nine eight nine point four line. What is the proper approach for doing that? Just make a motion?
Well, no, you're, you've got a resolution in front of you uh, to act on the, the budget. And right now, it, it's written so that it's the final budget would be the tentative budget adopted without amendment. However, we'll simply amend that tonight so that it could read that the twenty twenty-one tentative budget would be adopted as the final budget as amended. Um, and, and you can go through that amendment. We'll just edit the uh, resolution to adopt the final budget.
Okay, and just one note I, I did just get, um, going back to the Greenway, uh, Kevin, I just heard uh, from someone who's listening on, uh, that they did um, drive the Greenway Sunday or walk it or something and it appeared that they did do the cleanup. So maybe worth checking it out, uh, because it may have just recently happened, but either way, please bring that up to Neil and see what he is, he said.
I'll, I'll definitely talk to Neil.
All right. Um, also Maria, as I'm checking my texts, Doug is on and listening. Uh, I think he's listening uh, via the Facebook app. So if you send him uh, the parking uh, details about the street cleaning, he will be able to get it uh, in the Eastwood Press if it's there uh, in, in the morning.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so uh, Andy, I have the resolution uh, right here. I think it's shared on the screen.
Yes, it is.
So I can um, if, do we have to make a motion or would I just adjust the resolution?
You'll just adjust the resolution. So on the top of the second page, yep, in the last recital clause where it indicates without amendment, um, we'll change that to as amended. And then down, that, that's enough, just change, whoop, put in, put in the, there you go, has amended.
Okay.
And that's enough for that recital clause. And then below let's see, approves the tentative budget for the twenty fiscal year. Right there, I would put with yeah uh, an amendment and just list those um, those lines. Okay, with adjustments to lines.
Yep. Good.
You could also make, I mean, that's the general fund.
Oh, thank you, Denise.
The final general budget, possibly.
Okay, um.
General fund budget, I should say.
With an amendment to the general funds.
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
Up above, I think Denise, you're saying to adopt
To the twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one as the final
General.
General fund budget. Very good.
And then, I don't know, do you need to say that there were no changes to the water and sewer along with that or no, Andy?
What I would put, Rob, after the, right there, I put um, with no further changes to the general water or sewer tentative budget.
Yeah.
The Board of Trustees hereby approves the tentative budget for the Village of Huzick Falls fiscal year twenty twenty-one as the final general fund budget for such fiscal year with an amendment reducing the seventy three ten point four line by fifteen hundred and moving it to the sixty nine eighty nine point four line with no further changes to the general water and sewer tentative budget and directs that the, a certified copy be filed with the controller. Denise, you think that is adequate?
Yes, I do, Andy. I think that looks good.
Good.
All right, since we are on uh, this right now, I know it's later in the agenda, but um, if the board is okay with it, um, I would like to introduce uh, or call for someone to introduce this resolution approving the budget for twenty twenty-one, for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Um, Andy, do I need to read all the whereas?
I, I think in general, it's, it's simply indicating in the whereas clauses that because of the governor's emergency order and executive orders that were holding this meeting remotely and in fact, conducted the public hearing on the budget remotely in compliance with the executive orders that you in fact, conducted and held your public hearing this evening. You've considered any comments received, you reviewed the tentative budget. And that will take care of all the recitals, Rob. And if you want to repeat, number one, please do.
Okay, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls in regular session duly convenus follows. The Board of Trustees hereby approves the tentative budget for the Village of Huzick Falls fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one as the final general fund budget for such fiscal year with an amendment reducing the seventy three ten dot four line by fifteen hundred dollars and moving it to the sixty nine eighty nine point four line with no further changes to the general water and sewer tentative budget and directs a certified copy of such final budget be filed with the Office of the New York State Comptroller as required by law. Okay, I'm looking for someone to offer this resolution.
I'll make that motion, Rob, Bobby.
All right. And seconded by Vanessa. Okay. In that case, uh, Marie, can you run a roll call vote?
Okay, roll call, Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Denise, thank you for all the hard work on that. Um, big step done.
Just, yeah, not to interrupt, just on the resolution itself, next to, you can do this later, but after each voting, there'll be a line indicating the vote, all yeses, and then beneath the foregoing resolution was thereupon declared duly adopted. You can strike the was not.
Okay, I will simply send what I have here to Marie and she can finish it off.
Perfect.
Awesome. Is that right, Marie?
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, in number one. In number one, do you need to put the in front of Village of Huzick Falls in that first line?
Oh, you know, I did read it that way, didn't I?
You did.
Andy, should I add it?
You must have seen it there.
You, you can go ahead and add that there.
Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, back to the uh, next item on the agenda was going to be uh, voting or moving on this resolution. I think delaying the organizational meeting. Uh, the whereas is basically outline the executive orders that have postponed the election. They lay out uh, the uh, local state of emergency uh, that we declared. Given the postponement of village elections as described above, the Board of Trustees finds it is appropriate to likewise postpone the organizational meeting at such time as the village elections for twenty twenty are finally scheduled and held. And whereas the New York Conference of Mayor supports this approach, um, I'll skip now to the therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls in regular session duly convenus follows. One, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls hereby postpones its organizational meeting and appointment of appointed village officials until after the postponed village election for twenty twenty is conducted. And further that all determinations made at the most recent organizational meeting prior here too shall remain in effect. And further that all elected and appointed officials whose terms are set to expire will continue as holdovers in office until such time as successors are chosen and qualified. Looking for someone to offer the resolution?
I'll offer, um, this is Bobby.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Craig. Um, any, yes, any discussion?
Do, do we have to have holdover? It just sounds so cool.
Holdover, where is the word holdover?
Second line out.
Andy?
Yes, I was going to say Ben, that, that, that is the legal term. You do, there's a holdover in, in the office until a new person is appointed.
Do we have to put anything um, in the therefore be it resolved about it being online? At all? It says regular session duly convened, but do we have to put anything in it about being online?
Um, I, I, I don't think that's necessary, Ben. I think in the recital clauses, we, we go through the governor's executive orders.
Probably explains it, right?
Yeah, and at this point, uh, having remote meetings is in compliance with uh, law and it is duly convened, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Want to make sure.
Any further discussion? In that case, uh, Marie, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
And Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
All right, thank you. And Marie, I'll do the same thing. I'll send this to you as well. Okay, uh, the next item, this is where we're going to discuss the water bill. Um, and the uh, tax bill. We knew that the water bills would be going out uh, late this week or early next week as normal. And typically that means um, about a month later is when we would start the standard five percent um, uh, late fee, which would put it in, I think, um, either the beginning of May or possibly uh, uh, early June. Um, and I think that what we decided to do is postpone the late fee for this. Is this the right one, Andy, I'm looking at?
Rob, this is the water bill. And so in general, for the trustees, the, the dates for payment of the water bill is set by your local law, so you do have the authority to adjust the payment date. So this resolution proposes to uh, extend the payment date for the water bills currently being sent to be payable on or before July one before any uh, late penalty is imposed.
And that would extend it uh, from what would typically be the middle of May, would extend it um, practically forty-five days. It would give uh, the rest of May and all of June before the late fee comes. That way, if people have the money now and want to pay, they can. If they need to wait, that's, that's fine, and that will give them an extra forty-five days before any late fees come at it. Uh, so I guess with that in mind, um, I will read the now for, now therefore be it resolved for this resolution extending time for payment of water bills issued during a period of local emergency declaration. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls in regular session duly convenus follows. One, for the village water bills issued during the current billing cycle, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls hereby extends the time period for payments to July first, twenty twenty, prior to the imposition of a late penalty. Provided however, that such extension shall apply to only those village water bills issued in the current billing cycle during the tendency of the Village of Huzick Falls local state of emergency as described herein. Looking for someone to offer, is that Kevin?
Kevin.
Okay.
Second, Emily.
Thank you, Emily. Any further discussion on this? All right, uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yeah.
Trust Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Mayor Allen? And Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Bobby, we didn't hear you.
Did we lose you, Bobby?
Let me see if I see.
Sorry.
He's all right, I got him. All, all approved, thank you.
All right, thank you. So now that is passed. When we were looking at this initially and we decided we wanted to move it to July first, we then realized that the tax bills, which are something that are out of our control as to when they are sent, would be sent on June first and be due July first. Um, we did not like that, so we looked into uh, what we could do. Andy, can you quickly summarize um, the, what we can do and the reasons for it?
Uh, I can. So unlike the water bills, uh, the payment date being set in local law for the real property tax bills, uh, New York state law under the real property tax law states that payment must be made within thirty days from the date of issuance. So there's no ability of the village to change the payment date. But there is support for the proposition that the village can waive the imposition of any late penalty or interest. But it can only do so if it's done village-wide. You, you don't have the authority to waive interest or penalty on a, on a single bill for failure to pay. But as you're doing, or as you're proposing to do here, you do have the ability to waive interest and penalty for a period of time if all of your taxpayers have the benefit of that. Uh, I've reviewed that with the county. They concur in that approach. And so the resolution in front of you is not to extend the payment date technically, but to actually waive interest and penalty uh, for payment of the real property tax bills for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
So I would extend it an additional thirty days, right?
Yeah, generally, the payment is due within thirty days. And so what this does is extend, no, doesn't extend, strike that. It, it indicates that interest and penalty will not be imposed. Uh, it will be waived. It will be waived as long as the payment is made within 60 days. Now, functionally, what that means is people will not have 30, they'll have 60 days to pay their real property tax bill before any penalty or interest is imposed. And again, I've reviewed that with the county and they concur in that approach.
Alright, do you want to, do you feel like you've properly summarized all the whereas statements in this resolution providing a 30 day waiver of interest and penalty on payment for Village of Huesick Falls real property tax bills for the 2020-21 fiscal year?
I think I've done so.
Okay. In that case, I will read the now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesick Falls in regular session duly convenes follows. One, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesick Falls hereby provides a 30 day waiver on the imposition of interest and/or penalty on the payment of village real property tax bills for fiscal year 2020-2021 so that no interest or penalty will be imposed on any payment made within 60 days of issuance of such real property tax bill. Looking for someone to offer the resolution?
I'll make the motion Ben.
Thank you. Thank you Vanessa on the second. Any further discussion on this? Can't type your name Vanessa. Okay, great, um, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, sorry, that's a roll call vote. Marie please.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trust Lewis? Trustee Marpy? Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor. Thank you. And I want to thank the office staff for seeing this first and bringing it up. I want to thank the trustees for having a lot of good discussions about this over email. And also Andy for your work on legally figuring out what the processes are for this. I think it is a, it's a very good showing of how we are just village residents who are concerned about everyone else in the village. So thank you guys for your work on that.
And, and Rob, if I could add, Marie and Denise, if you can coordinate with the county on actually printing the bills and what the payment date on those bills should be and just review that with the county when they're ready to print the tax bills, the real property tax bills.
We will do that. As a matter of fact, I was going to reach out to them today just to make sure. I don't know, I'm sure they're working on a reduced schedule as well, just to make sure that we're gonna be hopefully on schedule for the June 1st printing.
I think you will be. If you can call Bill, film, I went over this with him. So he's aware of it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you. I did have one comment come up on the live stream, a sort of a question, and I want to bring this back to Kevin because I know he had talked about this as well. And it goes to the gazebo. There was a question about if we could also fix the sides of the gazebo in the park. We, we hadn't planned on doing that with community ban, but I would be interested to see what the trustees thought about putting some additional funds to helping fix some of the sides of the gazebo. Thoughts from everybody? It could be something where we look closer at what needs to be done, get an estimate, and then I can bring that back to you for next meeting. What do you think of that?
That sounds good to me.
Thoughts from everyone else?
I agree with that Rob, this is Ben.
Kevin, is that good for you?
You're talking about the sides, the, the spindles that have been kicked out?
Uh, yeah, some of them have been kicked out, some of them have just rotted.
Yeah. Someone also mentioned about the possibility of making it so they're removable. If you had events, it'd be easier to see what was happening in the gazebo, if you could take the sides off during certain performances, so it'd be easier to see the performers.
Alright, I'll bring that up. Maybe I'll start, I'll, I'll get in touch with whoever in the community ban would be leading.
Because of the height of that, it's gonna be a code issue.
Oh, thank you Mark. Is there any way for it to be removed temporarily in a rampie placed in there or something like that? Or it pretty much had to be?
You're talking about taking the spindles off, no. No, because that, that leaves, you know, what is that, three, four feet high? That leaves it open for a fall, that's a, yeah, issue.
You'd have an insurance issue.
Okay. Alright. Alright, I will, I will bring this up with Neil and I'll speak with Bill Gaylor to see who in the community ban will be doing the work and we'll start working on this for next month.
Rob, just to interject on that, if someone in the community ban is gonna do it, it's going to be, it's not gonna be, it's coming to somebody who knows what they're doing, correct?
Yes.
I, I, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to see the van stand look like a cop job. I hate that, you know, using a tombler's term loosely, but.
Understood. No, that, that would definitely be people who know what they're doing. And actually, I know recently, I think some fixes were done on the bottom of it going around. And I think that former mayor Borg was, did that or was involved in that and it came out great. So that is the kind of workmanship we'll be going for.
Okay, okay, that's all, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Also along those lines, I think Bill Gaylor had mentioned to me, he had some kind of a design for some newer spindles that would be a little harder to destroy.
Great, great, great.
Concrete.
That'll look great style wise. Alright, I have nothing else on the agenda. Does any other trustee have anything to bring up? If not, we're all staring at Ben for the next thing.
Motion to close.
Looking for a motion, we have a motion for adjourned, second by Emily. Any further discussion?
Nice job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, Carrie's, 7:45, we are done. Thank you guys very much. Thanks for everyone who was watching and following all the great etiquette stuff. I thought this went extremely well with almost no technical snafus. And again, my apologies to the Facebook Live stream group. Oh, we got this started a little bit later, but we didn't get it on. Thank you all, have a great evening.
Good night.